Okay, we're recording.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and get started for tonight, December 10th, 2024. If everybody is standing, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Deborah Henderson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Here, yep.
We have three people, we got a quorum.
Okay. Indication, Carmen Slim, please.
Dear heaven and father, thank you for this day, bless our community and its leaders. Please give comfort, guidance, and safety to those that are struggling this holiday season. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Review and approval of the agenda. Brian, you want to add something?
Yeah, we want to add, enter new business at the bottom, Resolution 2024-11.
Okay. Thank you. Minutes from November 12th. Questions concerned?
I thought they looked in order, uh, that they, um, we passed 2024, or move that we pass, uh, approve November 12th. Meeting minutes.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Quick roll call, please.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Deborah Henderson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass three to zero.
Voucher packet's 1210, 2024.
Anything I want to do, address outside of?
I had to fix something on the general, so it's for the, um, opioid settlement to County. That's what the updated was put out, and an updated fund report.
Can I ask what the charges from William Barrett Wilkowski was for RDC? That was enormous. Was there something that went on?
This, um, I, uh, on your voucher or a TIF?
On the accounts payable.
Let me just take a look.
I don't have mine.
What are you looking for?
Do you know what page it was on, or which went on?
I don't know how my pages work. It'd be more toward.
There's one on page three.
Well, there's water, there's sewer. One on water, one on sewer, probably one on storm, but, um, I don't have that one.
I'm gonna pull up our invoice.
It just seemed a little higher than normal, so was it to approve something, or?
Well, I'd have to look, and I can get back to you on it, but, uh.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, just get back to me on it.
I think one of these reports.
She just gave you.
Oh.
Twelve thousand twenty-nine, it's a storm for RDC.
It may be the work that we are doing to establish a new TIF district along US 31. There was a little over $2,500 for that.
Six thousand two hundred sixty-nine in sewer. So that's almost 20,000 there.
So that's all under the RDC?
Mm-hmm.
Who does the RDC, Hawkins? There you go. No, I'm kidding.
That's your new general.
Well, if you can, if you can point out which page.
And water.
It was on the water, water operating.
Here's water.
Where's it at? Oh, four thousand.
Hmm.
And then sewer.
Four thousand and six thousand.
Four thousand.
Probably a combination.
Definitely getting there.
Maybe.
I will email you guys with that answer.
One sixty-two, so.
Okay.
Stormwater one. But you can let me know later.
Yeah.
I'm a big deal.
Melissa said she'd also check into that, too.
I'll, I'll email you. Copy if you like.
Please?
Yep.
Any other questions with that?
Nope, it's the only thing I had, so outstanding.
Okay.
You want to hold on the voucher?
No.
Okay.
Got a motion to approve the voucher packet?
Yeah.
Submoved.
Quick roll call, please.
Deborah second it?
Second.
Oh, second now, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Deborah Henderson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yeah.
Pass three to zero.
Financial report. Ms. Carmen?
Uh, general fund balance, as of November 15th, is $425,267, or 25,267.05. With just under $100,000 revenue and a little, almost $150,000 dispersed in expenditures. Sewer operating fund balance is $683,000, $658,820. Revenue, $150,000, just a little over, and just under $130,000 dispersed. Sewer improvement balance, uh, remember it's high because of the over, um, SAF credits, we've already collected, uh, $1,166,296.65. Revenue, we brought in $13,842, and dispersed $55,000, which was, uh, most for the Indiana American Water Station project. And then the water operating, uh, balance is $330,298.12, with $130,000 just a little over in revenue, and about $142,000 dispersed. Uh, just so you know, and, and we're discussing this tonight, but our Indiana American Water bill, the last one was $55,000. So that's where we, we're seeing a lot of these higher dispersments in the water operating. The water improvement balance is $522,117.34, or $4,400 brought in revenue. Just a little, under $13,000 dispersed, um, in the month, so. Any questions on that, or special matters?
Um, the bio solids?
Calling?
Yeah. Is that a monthly bill?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, a mail box.
Yes, and that's getting reimbursed by insurance due to the tornado and the press still being down.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, I just was checking on that.
Yeah. So obviously, once we get the press back up and running, we'll go back to what the cost was for us to take that to the landfill.
Okay.
Carmen, can I have a question? Can we go back to the impression appropriation report? Is that you, or is that Melissa?
No, what we mean, is that you? Melissa Prince it.
Oh, who, who can answer my questions?
Okay, just ask, ask a question.
Okay.
Maybe her, I might know, too.
One, two, three.
Get my appropriation out.
Or if I, page five. Water liability insurance were negative seventy-eight percent. What, what is that about?
That's our liability insurance. Um, so if you remember, when we, we don't renew our liability insurance until mid-January, and we received over $100,000 increase in our premiums overall due to the amount of claims that we had, um, both with the tornado and then other claims as well. Um, and so unfortunately, um, has to be paid from somewhere, um, and that was a majority of. So we, the utilities unfortunately have been taking the brunt of those extra current costs, because we cannot go back to general fund and increase that liability.
Okay. But like, on the 2025 budget, we'll, we'll kind of add a little bit that for?
We added more to at least cover where we think we might be. But again, until we get our renewal, we won't know, um, if we're going to see an increase on our premium, or say, kind of level with where we're at.
Yeah, I remember you had mentioned that when we switched, uh, insurance, well, we didn't have a choice. We had to switch insurance companies, uh, that there would be a substantial increase, yes.
We're in the renewal process, so we've been going back and forth with performance and information on where we're at.
Okay. Page 11. Down towards three-quarter page, um, sewer other. Thirteen hundred percent. Hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over, can you?
Melissa can answer that one. Actually, I don't know if I can answer that, um.
Read the correction of errors.
Oh, yes, read the correction of errors, thank you. Um, and Adam and I are working on correcting these issues.
Anytime you make a correction, that's the only spot you can put it. There's nothing else in there that allows you to make a correction.
So on the, um, on that same page, we have some large percentages, are those all part of the REEDY? And then, is that all part of the REEDY recalculation, so to speak? Like, if you move up from thirteen hundred, you go to minus seventy-seven, minus sixty-six, minus forty-eight?
What's the topic of those?
Website maintenance?
What was that, I'm sorry?
Website maintenance, but it's in the sewer?
Mm-hmm.
So with some of those expenditures, uh, that point here, can't take it out of general fund. Um, drill down and get to more specifics, especially on like website maintenance. So that could be our, our monthly IT. Um, so anytime we call, we pay per hour, um, with our IT company. So if somebody has a computer situation, um, or we need to, you know, password reset, or whatever kind of IT issue we get charged on an hourly rate. And so we do our best to, and then we have monthly monitoring to make sure that, you know, if we click something, we're not supposed to flip, taking them and make those corrections.
Okay.
We have the same people?
I'm going back to the REEDY, so when is all that going to be corrected? If you gotta drop dead?
Hopefully.
Timing, when that's going to be complete and back to square zero?
We're working on it to be zero for, going forward for the new year.
But we're done with REEDY, aren't we?
Yes.
So yes, Adam and I just had a meeting Monday, and we're having one tomorrow to discuss more of this stuff and how to go about correcting it.
So there's a plane in place and a drop dead?
Adam's a flat rate, too, so.
Okay.
We won't have those big up, big goes by REEDY.
We do still have one set of invoices for REEDY for the utility rate studies, just as FYI. So that'll be in next month's packets. So they sent those after the deadline for bills this month.
We can't, we can't like, hold that until they fix all these other problems, right? The, the old purchasing 101, yeah.
That's an agreement, different agreement. That was separate signatures for the utility rate study. Um, agreed to pay a certain amount, we have to pay that, we can't not pay it, because we don't feel like we held up there.
Okay, just stay on top of it, we need to get this fixed, please. Thank you. Uh, special guest, have any, think none there, so old business? 2024-13.
So the first thing is the adjusting the water utility rates. And this is a public hearing, and so just a recap on where we were at last month. Um, after the utility rate study was completed, it was determined that an increase was necessary, especially since we received multiple increases from Indiana American Water. Um, we are projecting, we're proposing a, um, a three, three-year, kind of a three-phase approach, that it would become effective January 1st of 2025, and each year thereafter, um, for three years. But it would be a six percent, six percent increase, uh, per year for the next three years. Um, so that's on across the board, on all of those rates when it comes to, um, water. The only exception, um, that we are looking at a different option, and I had emailed this out to everybody. Um, last month, we had looked at the system development charge, and, um, had originally proposed, um, a $2,000, and so this is for anything new. When they tap onto our system, um, they receive a tap fee, but then we called it a, a capacity fee, but we also, it can be interchangeable with system development charge. Um, we had looked at $2,000, and after some discussion, it was, um, decided to have a, um, offline meeting, um, with Richard and Tim, um, to kind of look at how the, you know, where, where do we really want to be as far as our system development charge? Um, so I had sent a follow-up email, and I had provided a, a chart, um, to everyone. Um, it was determined to, um, go with alternate four, which is a minimum $3,000, um, for the, um, system development charge. Now, let me, let me back up, currently we're charging $1,000, well, $1,035. Um, REEDY through this, the utility rate studies made a suggestion that we should be charging $4,376. So we're not as high as what the rate study came back and said we should charge, um, but it is a significant charge over where, um, we are currently, um, at. Again, this is only for new development, this is not for our existing, um, customers. Um, and, um, so the proposal after a meeting with Richard and Tim was to, to come back with that one amendment to the ordinance, um, to have the system development charge, um, at $3,000 for a 5/8 inch meter. Um, and then there's a, a block, uh, calculation for, uh, meter size as it goes up. So it goes up to, if you have an eight-inch meter, it would be $240,000 to tap onto our system. So, any questions on that that you have for me before? I'm gonna turn it over to, um, the open up for the question.
Carmen, could you make mention, I apologize, could you make mention, um, this hasn't been addressed for, for how many years?
So we haven't had.
To kind of give us some background?
Right, and so we haven't had a three-year increase in almost 12 years. Um, so I believe the last one, the phase went up through, I think it was 2014, so I know that's only 10 years, but the study was done before that, and it was a two-phase, um, two-phase approach the last time. And so it's been quite a long time, and, and I know, I know of at least two increases since I've been here that we've received from Indiana American Water, with this last one being significant, I know there were more, but since I've been here, um, we've received two. Um, and.
It's almost been almost every year, almost every year.
Right, so this last one was forty, over forty percent increase that we received. And the previous increases, we have not passed on to the residents and, or the, the users, but not just residents. Um, so, um, so yeah.
And, and, and to add to that, I think, um, I think it'd be wise for the town to implement, like, every three to five years, that we kind of re, renegotiate, or kind of bring this back, do additional studies, so that we don't have a 15-year period that, and we're paying and subsidizing. So I think that's part of the, the plan, is to kind of put it on a, a calendar, and then kind of revisit this to make sure we don't get behind the eight ball going forward.
Some communities will implement an automatic increase every year. Um, but this, since we're looking at a phase in of three years, um, in, in what that you just, what the rate consultants had suggested, is every three to five years, visit your rates again. Um, my, I, I'm trying to be optimistic, but, but I also am being realistic. I have a feeling that once Indiana American Water's full rate is, is put into effect, and whatever that timeline is, um, that they have to wait before they can make another petition to the IURC for a rate increase, they're going to do it.
Absolutely.
We may, we may have another rate increase in between this time and the next time we do a rate study, so. Um, but, but this was only taking into consideration the impact that we've been given now. It doesn't take into account any future increases we receive from Indiana American Water. So we're not, we're not out there to just grab as much money as we can to protect, you know, for future rate increases. This is just solely looking at the data that, um, we currently have, how our operations are working, what we need to be able to run the, the water utility, um, efficiently, and then, um, how we, we've been receiving the, the increases from Indiana American Water.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
So this is a public hearing, so you have to open up. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing for 2024-13. Um, anybody would like to speak or have any questions concerning this agenda item? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
We need a motion to, uh, approve ordinance 2024-13.
First, you need to decide what you want the Section 6 on the capacity charge scheduled to be. I can give you, it's on page four, and here it is. If you're in, you know, I guess, uh, willing to consider the recommended 3,000 gallons, I'm sorry, $3,000 per EDU, then this would be what that would look like. This is just the revisions to that section.
Once you print it.
Print the whole thing.
It's got everything in it.
It says. Why is there three of them?
Because you need to pass down these two.
Oh, I need to pass down these two. Gotcha.
Yeah, that would be the revised, um, we can add Section 6, which rewrites to amending Section 51.46 during capacity charges of your town code. And you can see that the 5/8 inch, or capacity charge is 3,000, three-quarter inch is 4,500, fourth down to eight-inch, 240,000. And if that's what you want, then I would suggest that you either make a, a separate motion, amend what you have, uh, been introduced before to update the Section 6, or you can just.
Approve the amended.
Prove it as amended, with Section 6 being amended to the 3,000. But you need to decide whether 3,000 is, is the EDU figure you want to use.
Okay, I have a question. I see the fire sprinkler connection thing, is that for businesses?
For anyone that has.
Yeah.
Okay, because they tap into something separate?
They tap into the water.
Okay, so people who put sprinklers, things in their yards, and they have a meter or anything, do they tap into our water at all?
Into their service line.
Into their, they go ahead?
Their own service.
They have to do the tap in?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I make a motion to approve, um, ordinance 2024-13 as amended, on page four, Section 6?
With the per EDU charge of $3,000?
Yes, per EDU charge of $3,000.
I'll second.
Deborah made the motion, and Brad second it, we have a roll call, please.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Deborah Henderson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
The effect, has that affected?
January 1st?
That's, that's the ordinance set, because as of January 1st.
Um, we found out that we could.
Go ahead.
When this changes in, it may take four to six weeks.
There's two, uh, things I think that apply to the timing. There's your monthly rates, and, let's see here. It says, effective January 1, 2025, to first be implemented with the bills issued in February 2025, and due in March 2025. Uh, or as soon thereafter as the revised rates and charges can be implemented by the town's billing system. So hopefully that addresses whatever practical administrative.
Don't we have to notify the residents of the increase?
No.
No, gotcha.
Not, not for this type of.
But we will on, uh, their bill. It's January for that.
I was gonna ask, are we gonna like, notify that there's a change on the, please?
We'll put it out on our website as well.
And so there are some others, however, that take effect immediately. For example, the tap-on fee and the capacity charge, they take effect immediately, because they're not a recurring charge, uh, so there's no, no need to wait.
And that's going to be based off pulling permits, or?
Right.
Okay.
They don't have to put those in a system, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And Melissa, I have revised version that printed out, ready for signature.
Carmen, 2024-15, please.
So this is the, uh, salary ordinance, uh, for 2025. This is a recap, as a statement to last meeting, this is proposing a $2,000 increase for our full-time employees. Um, and there are some other positions that, um, there was slight increases in the fire side of things, um, that you all have the ordinance and have had this. We use the traditional, how we've been using our, our 3% raise, based off of the deputy marshal position, uh, which is the position that we have the most employees with. So that's where we rounded up to the, the 2,000. Um, at the last meeting, you all discussed performance base, or we talked about performance base, that you have the, um, indication that you like for it to be a $1,000, flatten up to $1,000 based on their performance. I know I've completed reviews for my full-time employees, and I believe Chief has completed all his, and Slim's completed all of his as well. Um, so we're ready to go, um, with whatever you all decide, um, on the salary ordinance, but I will, this changed from last month, so I'm just hoping to take any questions.
I'd like to speak on this real quick. So, um, last month, um, decided to potentially do, um, change it up and, and do performance reviews on administration. I know it was kind of in the 12th hour, um, and I apologize for that. I think it's important that the, the council leads by example. I think it's important that we do have performance reviews across the board. Um, I personally, in my job, I have performance reviews and objectives and goals that I have to meet, or I do not attain a, a bonus, or do not obtain any pay raise. So I know this is a, it's a big change, it's a drastic change, um, from prior commitments and so forth, but I think it's important going forward that, that we try to institute, um, different type of policies for the betterment of, of the, the town in general. So with that being said, um, I had sent out a, or asked Carmen to send out a notification to the town council. Unfortunately, um, I did not get my information back. I was ready to put it, this, put this into a matrix. I created a matrix that I was gonna, um, and, and hold a executive session to, to give feedback, constructive criticism. Um, I think it's good, I was all ready, but unfortunately, I did not get my information back, which is, um, something we'll have to work on, so I apologize for the inconvenience today. What was I supposed to send back to you? The council was supposed to send back the reviews to me.
Oh, the reviews, oh, my bad.
So, um, anyway, it's, it's watering the bridge, but we'll, we'll commit to making sure that this is done better next year.
Yeah.
So, um, with that being said, um, I know we had on the table of approval of $1,000 going forward until we did those reviews. Unfortunately, we had a hiccup, and we weren't able to go and do the special session to do the administration. So, um, I just want to clarify that I, I think it's good that we do this for the administration going forward. I think it helps, um, for the betterment of the town. So with that being said, um, I'll let somebody else speak on this, on this ordinance.
I think other than the administration, it's fine with $1,000, and then you guys have already done that, and then did the referrals, so I'm fine with the ordinance.
So I guess, do we have a motion to continue the ordinance or keep it at $1,000, or, because we voted last month for the $1,000 until we did the reviews?
So Carmen has said the reviews are done. Chief Ship, you did all your reviews on all your individuals and so forth. What about the clerk treasurer? All that's been done?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's effort on that, so thank you very much for following up on that. So since the reviews are done, and this is on the agenda, I guess we'd have a motion to increase and accept the overall 3%, which is equivalent to 2,000, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a second?
So then, is that a motion to approve the ordinance 2024-15 as presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Take a vote, please.
Richard, you made that motion, correct?
No.
Deb did.
Deb did, I was just clarifying.
Okay.
So Deb, and then Brad.
Brad Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass three to zero.
So this is what's introduced at last month's meeting as well. Ordinance decision on the stormwater use for the Town of Lightland. So again, the utility rates have also included a full model rate study. And the consultant made a recommendation that should be a total of a dollar and 11 cent increase over three years to be implemented, so thirty-some-odd cents, don't help me on my math, but that would be in Jan, uh, 2025, 26, 27. And let's see, be effective again January 1, or whenever we can get that implemented onto our utility bills. So welcome any questions, if you have any. If not, ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-16. Final reading.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Brad Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass three to zero.
And just so you know, as of right now, the sewer rate is not increasing. So, you know, I know rate increases can be, you know, not received the best, but we, we did find the increases needed in stormwater and water, but not in sewer just yet.
Next, utility budgets.
So the utility budgets, I'll do the water first. I did send out a revision today. As we were starting to departmentalize and looking at how to best utilize our, our dollars and such, it did get missed in the gasoline and diesel, the water. We had talked about putting it all in the end dates, and we ended up hoping instead of them, we did not. So that was left out from last month's introduction of the utility budget. So the only change on the water operating budget is adding $15,000 in the fuel and east earth, that's in the diesel line item, which is considering what we had in last year's, of 2024's. So ask if anybody has any questions on the water operating budget, and if not, ask if you could graciously approve their budget.
So water operating, fuel expenses will come from water?
Yes.
And sewer operating fuel expenses, okay.
I had it in fuel, I just forgot to put it in water.
That's fine.
Noticed it at the meeting last month, and then got busy, and so unfortunately didn't get to it till today.
Okay.
So that's the main change from last month.
So you just need to add a cocaine? Do we have consensus that that is okay?
Yep.
You have consensus and it's okay?
Uh, the sewer, nothing has changed from the previous month. I think we'll just, you know, there was no sudden rush into approving the rate changes from last month. So for this, I didn't ask for those, at the November meeting, and would ask for your blessing and approval of the sewer operating budget for 2025.
Yes.
Do we need to vote on that, or do we just have consensus? Consensus on the sewer budget? Brad, you're good?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, we have consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the new business?
So we have under new business to start ordinance 2024, which is an ordinance amending the zone map of the Town of Lightland, rezoning, rezoning certain properties from R3 residential to A1. The property in question is 150 South Railroad Street, and the petitioner, Josh Sterrett, is here this evening. This property was affected by the tornado and now is a vacant lot. And Mr. Sterrett, I can allow him to kind of speak to it as well, but I'll kind of give the quick overview. This did go before the plan commission last week. Again, to go from a zoning of R3, which had one single structure on it, and the request is for this to be rezoned to A1. It will still be, the proposed development is to still be a one-structure building with four units that would be owner occupied. It is a larger lot than, you know, your, your traditional lots. If you've been down Railroad Street, you'll, you'll see that. So one of the things, or there's multiple things that the plan commission does take into consideration before making a recommendation on a rezone, of which is that they look at the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and characters of the current structures in each district, and the most desirable use for the land in which each district is adapted. Conservation of property values through the jurisdiction and responsible development is a, the plan commission did provide a favorable recommendation regarding the change in zoning, and would ask that the, the town council certify the same. I'd be open to answering any questions that you may have specifically on this, but again, this is just a rezone for the property. His, his proposed development would go through development plan review and that, and just so you know, it does already, you've received a conceptual, it meets all of the setbacks, it meets all of the requirements that it would need to, for, for the property. But if it's specific, I'll let Josh kind of speak to that as well. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
What is A1?
Apartment.
Is there apartments anywhere else near this?
Um, not necessarily near this, but we, there is another vacant lot just south of that, so potentially, you know, that could, that is zoned R3 as well. R3 allows you to have up to two, multi-family, but it's two, two units, not four. But like I said, these would be owner occupied, not rented.
So at the plan commission meeting, did you send out?
Yes.
Notification to other residents?
Yes.
And no one have objected?
So there were a couple of folks that were just here to ask additional questions, and of which the, the plan commission took into consideration. There was, it didn't, the, the concerns didn't seem to affect the plan commission's decision. There was four members of the plan commission, or was it five?
There were five. There's five on here.
And it was a five to zero, so.
Can I ask what concern was?
Um, there was a concern about property values, but to be honest, this will increase property value.
Right.
Especially in that particular area. There, there was a, the neighbor just to the north, there's, there's a shared, I'll say shared, there's an alley there that is still technically, it has never been vacated, but that property tends to use that as parking, but it is technically an alley that's not been vacated. And so we talked through the process of, and I had shared this with that particular resident last October, on how to go about vacating the right-of-way and vacating that alley, and that what they could do is either split it between the two properties, you each get six feet, but the property owner to the north decided not to move forward with that vacation of the, the right-of-way. So they've been using the town's right-of-way as extra parking. I.
But we don't allow that.
No, but we also don't.
Of course.
Enforce it. Like, I mean, we do, but it's, there's no road there. It's, 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 it's been overgrown, it's probably from back in the original time when that, that property was platted and just never been vacated.
Carmen, you go page six on the history.
I do not have the staff report in front of me, but go ahead and ask.
So, the sentence is, "The structure was demolished shortly thereafter by a member of B's construction without approval of the homeowner." What, what is the, what is up with that? So if you didn't have an appro, I mean, is there gonna be a lawsuit or something with this?
Unfortunately, the person with that is no longer with us. Uh, I don't mean with us, as in the town, they, they passed.
Who, the homeowner?
No, the person that pushed the house in. So that's between the homeowner, and I don't know why that was put into the staff report, that's not really relevant.
So there's no liability whatsoever to the town because of, of that?
Well, no, I mean, the, they, uh.
Or no liability towards this new homeowner?
I feel like that is a civil thing, that that needed to be between the property owner and the person that was on their property. They did not have permission, so.
Can you think of any liability that would be for us?
No.
Okay.
Well, speaking from experience, I tried to do almost the exact same project in Marion County a few years ago, and couldn't get past the receptionist, if you will, on the phone, inquiring about exploring a similar, very similar project, almost identical. And this is how affordable housing is created, by people doing stuff exactly like this. Seems like an incredibly appropriate use of the property and ground that is currently being unused. I think, I, I'm a strong advocate of doing these exact things, and I, I'm thrilled to see it. And it will.
Improve property values, it will make.
New types of opportunities for people to live and live more affordably in this town, and so I think it sounds like a fantastic project.
And, and just to add to, Josh plans to also live in one of the, the units, and, and so again, there were some concerns about, well, the, the apartment, and will that bring riffraff or anything of that nature, you know, and so I feel like with Josh living there, he's going to take pride in not only his property and his, his unit, but.
So it's a duplex?
It's a four, it's like a quad.
Four.
So it's similar, I'll say similar.
I know, to the apartments over there.
Yes, right.
That seems like a lot of traffic for that little street.
So before, there were, there was one home.
Mm-hmm.
That was a question as well, is traffic. So there was one home, and the question was, how many cars did that one home have? They had two adults, and I believe they had children living there too, so there were multiple cars. Yes, it's a narrow street, but you're talking, even if there's four units, two cars each, you're talking eight cars. That's not that much more than.
So they're gonna make the driveway big enough to accommodate eight cars?
Yes, I think the, and now that I have the staff report, I believe the, the conceptual's in there.
You tend to like walk around after parking, and kind of, there's often danger of, of parking on the land, so it's not so tight, and it will actually get more people on that than it should. But that's what was brought up, is, you know, when the other houses were there, we still had, are gonna have pretty much the same amount of traffic, once this build with the houses that were there.
But we don't allow street parking.
There wouldn't, there, there wouldn't be, there would be parking in front of you.
But if everybody here had a Christmas party, you know what I'm saying?
It would be just like the Willows. I mean, they only have enough parking spaces for, for units, and maybe have a couple of guests, so, you know, and then that's a bigger, I'll say, complex, but the intent would be that, you know, it, it would be for, the, the people that live there, and if, yes, if they have guests, but if you also look at the, the layout, there is some open land there, but until he kind of decides what he might be with that, maybe, you know, it's, you know, but as of right now, we didn't see any concerns with additional wearings here on the road for it, as well, you know, you're talking a couple extra cars down there than what it already sees.
So I'm assuming you're taking unit D with the garage?
Uh, yeah.
And it's a little bit bigger.
Anybody have any questions for the folks on the, for the.
So it looks like we are needing to consider a, approve ordinance 2024-17. Make that motion to approve ordinance 2024-17.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Vote, please.
Brad Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass three to zero.
You're welcome. Now you have to come to town council meetings.
People, you.
Nepotism policy, I assume that's Mr. Watson?
Yes, this is an annual requirement by state law, the council members, and I believe the clerk treasurer as well.
Yep.
To certify that they have complied with the town's policies and state law as it relates to nepotism and contracting with relatives, been provided a certificate to sign, and I believe the town's policy as well, and those just need to be signed by each of the council members and the clerk treasurer. So we'll need to make sure we get Tim and Joe.
Do you have an extra one?
Yeah.
Cause I, I signed this because I've forgotten. For, for sure.
And it doesn't require any action of the full council, but does need to do that, and it's good to have that on the agenda as a reminder, make sure that happens, and need to ultimately get it into the record with the clerk treasurer.
I made a pretty wonderful.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all on that?
Mm-hmm.
Right. 2025 holiday and meeting schedules?
Um, I'll be on the, um, so, you have the 2025 holidays that we're asking to approve, that would be time off for the non-police department officers as they follow a different calendar, so the rest of that would, the, the way that the police officers follow it would follow how we've written it in the handbook, which I can't remember exactly, but.
They get an extra day.
They get a floating holiday. Yeah, they get, okay, yeah. Uh, but there would be 14 holidays that are being presented as days off for the town employees, so ask for your blessing to approve that. And then the 2025 meeting schedule, the only thing that is a, well, there's two things on here that are to be determined, economic development, unless we have, if we don't have any matters to discuss, we do have to have a mandatory reorganization once a year, so we'll get that done before the deadline, I believe, is February.
I think it's just anytime in February.
Anytime in February, we have to get that done, so I didn't put an exact date, but it's, we'll just put it down. And then the parks board, we're planning on getting them together to kind of figure out the, the best meeting schedule, so once we get that determined, if that needs to come back before you to kind of adopt their meeting calendar, we'll bring that at that time. So I just ask for your approval of the 2025 holiday schedule and the, uh, meeting schedule. of the 2025 holiday schedule and the, um, uh, meeting schedule. Yes.
Um, the November 11th on the town council, that's Veterans Day. So I don't know if you wanted to move it or if you guys wanted to meet that day.
We've always met. That's a good question.
Not when it's fallen on a holiday.
No, not veterans. Even election day, we were here.
Well, but that's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a good.
It'll be Monday overtime for Carmen, I mean, Slim, Rick. Me, Candy, and I can have a little.
Then we need to change it then.
Yeah.
I was trying to get you more money.
So we definitely can't meet, uh, her birthday. Um, we usually push it out like to that Monday's day, but then we run into stormwater board. So.
Yeah, stormwater's the 12th and then RDC is the 13th. So we could do it on that Monday.
You could do, you could do it after stormwater. They're not very long.
What if you did, what if they moved the stormwater meeting, what times their meetings start?
Seven.
What if you move them to six and then put us at seven? See if that would.
Do that.
I'm sure. You have a minor can.
Do it. And then you can reappoint stormwater people if, uh.
Yeah, there you go. We'll push it to the 12th. So with that amendment, and then we'll, we'll chat with the stormwater board and I'm sure they put you on the list because we do mention that our revenue service that it was otherwise discussed, but.
I mean, if it's going to be an issue, then we can always change it or.
I don't think.
Two of them are retired, so they're probably fine. Um, the only thing, down the bottom where it says annual board of finance meeting has a double asterix.
Oh, that's usually January.
Yeah, but the double asterix isn't on there.
So that'll be to be January town council, starting with your board of finance meetings. So I'll make that amendment for the calendar schedule.
You have a question?
I think we have consensus on the holiday schedule.
Okay, I dread this next topic.
Well, I can't vote. I don't have my letter.
Can we do a performance review on you?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Watson, you're up.
I got one. It's Joe's.
Well, uh, on an annual basis, our firm, uh, reviews its rates and charges and, um, it has proposed a new rate for the town as outlined in the, uh, in the letter. And I would request your favorable consideration.
Well, since I got a Christmas card.
Do you have any issues with the new rates?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, we have overall consensus for your rates, sir.
Thank you.
Till, till next.
Authority for, until next year. An authority for Carmen to sign it.
Yep, authority for Carmen to sign it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Carmen or Slim again?
We have the new item, remember? The resolution that we have.
Oh, 2024-11, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. Um, so this is a resolution 2024-11, uh, which is authorizing the clerk treasurer to encumber certain town of Whiteland 2024 budget funds. Um, so obviously at the end of the year, we've got some items that were budgeted appropriated, um, that, um, those projects have either not, uh, have not been invoiced or they're not complete to where we have, uh, made the distribution of payment. Um, so they have got them in a table there listed. Um, as we discussed at the October meeting, um, the road construction project did not approve this year. Um, we had appropriated a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm asking for that money to be encumbered into next year's budget. Um, and then we also had a couple of projects, um, that, uh, were funded through the lit, which were the Parkmaster Plan. That's the forty thousand dollars is the Parkmaster Plan. Um, the forty thousand eight seventy-five, that is, um, for our, our, um, the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, um, which is basically combining our subdivision control ordinance and our zoning ordinance, um, and updating that. And then we still have a, a portion of the Oprah ring for our comprehensive plan to pay. Um, so that's the forty-four hundred dollars that we're asking to be encumbered to next year. Um, and the fire cap cume, um, they had made a purchase or, um, we have an agreement, um, a PO that Richard gave approval for them to purchase, um, new fire hoses, um, as they were down to their last bits. Um, that's the twenty-four thousand and thirty-two dollars. And then the additional fire cap cume, um, is for repairs to the, uh, ladder truck, which equaled twenty-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents. And both of those have POs. Um, the others, the previous items have contracts that have been signed, um, the NBH restricted and those are the three lit items, um, all have, uh, contracts that are signed and then the fire cap cume has a PO. Um, it's just those items. We have an invoice yet this year, so we can't, we gotta move it to next year to go and pay it. So ask for your blessing and approval of resolution 2024-11.
Have a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-11 for encumbering the funds.
Second.
Second.
Please.
Yes.
No?
Yes. Carmen, do you have anything else? Okay, Slim?
Uh, well, we're gonna look at, uh, they, they've got it coming. Um, it just pretty much, uh, we'll have to, we'll have to let sit now. And it's twenty to thirty foot screen in the bottom of it. And so we are ready to, um, drop a bigger pump in it and run it. I'm trying to get permission right now to be able to run a hose across, um, whose property's quarter five property into the pond so that, uh, we can discharge the water and then we can do a couple tests and kind of see where it kind of ends up at.
This is the Aquifer concept that we're, okay.
Yeah. And then we have made some progress on building, um, getting that, um, moving forward a little bit. We've, we finally have, uh, been here and I, we've finally kind of gotten in on Travis to where he's kind of at the point, um, he has sent it to the higher ups to kind of see what decision they're going to make on the engineer is wanting to do their own inspections because their name is on the plans and that kind of stuff, um, like soil testing, all that. So we're waiting on them to give us a final answer of what we can do. So we're, we're going.
So that's the building rebuild and stuff? So they moved off center, off the insurance? You got, you got some feedback from that gentleman?
Finally, yeah.
You, you kind of telling we need to move on this?
I've been, yeah, telling them that for a month.
Okay.
Three months now.
And then, um, once you have like the prints and stuff, are you going to present that to the council so we can kind of see what the plan is on, on?
Pretty much going to be the same exact building.
Okay.
Exact same thing.
Well, I know, I know some of us probably like to see at least a concept drawing and, and kind of what you're, what you're doing.
But, uh, the only thing I am probably going to change is the salt barn. Um, we kind of talked about, um, doing it a little differently. I can take the money from the salt barn that we have now and building the, the other kind of storage building that we had. I can use some of the money from that to build us a salt barn that's more up to date. Cause right now we can only hold about 200 tons. I want to be able to hold about four or five hundred tons at a time.
Uh-huh.
A lot of times we have a major storm, we're pretty much at about a hundred and fifty tons. So then we're, you know, really hoping that the next load of salt comes in to last this through the next storm.
Okay.
I want to kind of get it up into the future where we're kind of struggling with it.
Um, going back to that insurance guy, has he, are, are you chasing down a date? That's what I'm concerned about. We need a date. We need a date.
Give you a date because it all depends on when they decide when they're going to okay it or, you know.
Somebody needs to commit to something because this has been going on way too long.
Right.
So.
That's where I keep pushing and pushing, you know?
Well, if you need some help, call me, okay? Cause we, we need, we need to move off center.
Right.
Haven't you heard the, their, their big motto? Delay, deny, dispose.
Yeah, well, that's ridiculous.
Dispose.
Thanks Slim for the update. Mr. Ship, do you have anything, sir? You sure? Did you get enough to eat the other night? Okay.
Richard, I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just let him go.
Going back to Carmen again. I'm coming back. I'll circle back to you again.
I didn't mean to cut you off. You didn't have anything, right? Okay. Um, so we did get our three-year growth levy appeals. Um, that's the one that did get approved for fire in the town. Um, so just so you know, the higher repeated petition of the excess levy appeal or the three-year growth levy appeal and it will, um, spend an extra twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, on the town side, we had petition for the three-year growth levy appeal, um, at a hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and eight, but due to circuit breakers, um, we're looking at only an additional sixty-two thousand dollars in additional revenue. So, um, but they got approved, um, just not exactly where we were hoping they would be. Um, and we learned that inflation is not a good excuse as to why we need more money. Uh, the second thing that just came out today is our 1782 notice was received today. So we have 10 days to review and, um, respond back. Uh, and I did a quick glance at it, Adam's looking at it, um, but I did a quick glance and everything looks, looks fairly well. There's going to be some, you know, just kind of cleaning some things up. They did approve the numbers as presented, but there are some comments that I need his help in deciphering. So, um, those were my only two updates.
Okay.
You haven't received the, um. It's not 1082, is it 10?
It's 1782.
Seventeen eighty-two.
That's what we just got. Yeah. So the certified budget.
But do they know about the encumbering?
That had nothing. I asked, uh, at the last meeting and we didn't have any additional appropriations. That's what would have affected it. And so I called Sam afterwards, um, after our council meeting, he said, just to verify and, you know, we were good with, we didn't show any, um, any issues there, so.
Can I get a copy of the 1782 sent me, to me, please?
Um, one comment I'd like to make, um, before we go back to Mr. Ship is the audit report that we had, that we sent out to the council, that you guys have taken a look at that. We've, uh, we had some things that we need to work on. So I just want to make sure that everybody is, understands kind of the, the, I guess, the urgency of that audit report findings. And then Melissa and Carmen, you're going to stay on top of having the new accountant kind of help us streamline and, and meet those objectives that for corrections.
I think the biggest thing that Richard wanted us to make sure that we set for time, like, uh, definitive dates on when we would have SOPs, uh, created and following. And so there were some that were by quarter four of this year, and then there's some, most of the rest of them are quarter one, maybe. I think there might have been one that was quarter two of, of 2025 to have SOPs because that was where, um, a lot of the recommendations did come from. SBOA were having SOPs in place and making sure.
Okay. Mr. Ship, we're going to go back to you. You're good again. Thought about it the second time, good. Okay. And Eric, can I hear, um, council comment about anything? Public comment?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, you have received a proposed conflict, uh, consent letter and now would be a good time for you to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To, uh, authorize Carmen to, to sign that consent letter.
Executive.
Okay, yeah, we have a, uh, consent letter, so we'll take a vote on that. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes, consensus.
Thank you.
I'm going to do it. Public comment at all? No? Okay, we'll adjourn. Thank you.